Okay, folks, it is six o'clock and the call this meeting is immediately being ordered to order. The meeting was properly posted on June twenty first. Now Troy and Jeff neither will be here. They both have family medical issues. So we do have a quorum, I believe, but go ahead with the little call.
Okay, um, Yerup?
Here.
Theo?
Here.
Yerson? Michelson?
Here.
Ruland?
Shland?
Here.
Springsteen?
Here.
Okay, and we do have a quorum, so we will conduct business. Item four, additions or corrections to the posted agenda. If there is none, is there a motion to approve? Sumo by Scott?
Second.
By Natalie, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by the same sign, that motion is carried. Item five, approve the minutes from the last regular board meeting. Motion. Motion by Ray.
Second.
Second by Jerry, discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by the same sign, that motion is carried. Item six, appearances and significant correspondence. We have three people registered to speak on issues. I've got Mark Shaneman first.
Um, I think most of you know me, Mark Shaneman. I've been in this town for my life. I'm seventy-two and been here every year of it, except for the three years in military. I'm here tonight with a very big concern on the lake as far as watercraft goes. When the Sportsman's Club purchased the lake from the DNR, we made a decision to not have any boats on there whatsoever. And it was that way up until the DNR closed our lake due to what they said was an unsafe dam, which we all know was a bunch of baloney. Anyway, they have cost us one heck of a lot of money. And it was through the good graces of this village that the lake was thought to be important enough that we spent all this money on the lake. I don't, I haven't heard any dollar amount, but I'm almost afraid to ask what the final tally was or what you have spent up to this point. I know it's in excess of half a million. And the sealing of the lake is a very, very expensive project, as you should know. And by putting watercraft on the lake, you put the whole bottom into jeopardy by people stomping in the mud because every single little footprint is going to push that seal out and the water is going to leak again. So, and theoretically, well, not theoretically, I've seen it time and time again out there where the canoes and kayaks have been out there already without, and how they knew that they could even do it, I don't have a clue. But, uh, two weeks ago, I went by on a Saturday and the whole south end of the lake was covered with kayaks. I don't know how many there were. I didn't stop to count. I was so ticked off, I couldn't hardly talk. I stopped and I asked three ladies that were standing shoulder to shoulder in the shelter as to what was going on. They said they were having a canoe class, excuse me, a kayak class. And, uh, I said, and who gave you, or who did you go through to get that permission? And they said, I didn't know we had to have any. And I looked out there and all I could see is red kayaks all over the place. Some people in the kayaks, probably a third of them were out of the kayaks. Some were standing on our beds that we're going to plant plants on if they ever get here. And they also become spawning beds for fish. Well, some people were this deep in water and some people were in this deep of water, meaning they were on those beds. And that's going to happen all the time. Therefore, I ask you to reconsider your choices of letting kayaks and canoes and paddle boards on the lake for the simple reason you have the Black Earth Creek, which we've also contributed to, I believe, for that trail. And, uh, the work in the, in the creek, which has become a very popular kayak place to go right through the village. So why would you want to put them on the lake? I don't understand it. I guess that's about all I got to say.
Okay, thanks. Bob Palin.
Uh, I understand there's aerators for the lake.
Right.
Are those going to be operated year round? Uh, do you know? Mark?
If needed, yes.
Okay. Uh, I mean, we, the Sportsman's Club talked to, talked about, uh, putting some money in for getting fish and re-establishing a fishery there. And our big concern is the oxygen content in that lake scene. There's not a steady flow of water through it anymore. I mean, it's just being filled as it evaporates, I understand. And my big concern is the, the oxygen level, if we start pumping several thousand dollars worth of fish in there, is the oxygen level going to be monitored? And, uh, as that, the aerators turn it on or? I hate to, you know, see a lot of money stuck in a fishery that you get a big die out or something. Is that something you have to watch very closely?
Yeah. Right now, the oxygen level in there is higher than it's ever been. There is about fifty gallons a minute of artesian water flowing in.
Okay.
Five, five zero?
Five zero, forty-five to fifty. We had it shut off, um, just through the winter, we shut it down because I felt it was a safety hazard because people want to go out on the ice and it kept a big portion of the lake open. But with fish in there, well, since then, we just turned it on and it flows through. The aerators are there, they work. The intent is to use them as much as they're needed.
Okay.
For sure, and they do have some.
Yeah, my, my biggest question is, I guess, is, is the oxygen content going to be monitored pretty much continuously? I mean, do you have a monitor out there for it now or you just?
We don't.
You just monitor, uh, go out with a portal one and check it once in a while?
Yes.
Okay. I guess my biggest concern is, you know, if you get some weather coming up like we're going to have here in the next week or so, now oxygen can be depleted off quick with ninety-degree days and you'll have a lot more evaporation also. I think it should be considered when we put fish in that at least it'd be checked every couple of days. Or I don't think it'd be that expensive to put a sensor in there and have it continuously monitored, probably. I mean, it's going to be inexpensive, I don't think it's a great expense. That's all, Ed.
Thanks, Bob. Bradley Brunker.
I'm going to step up a little bit so people can hear me on both sides and I can hear everybody. Um, so I know most of you here, I was here at the meeting and spoke last fall, I guess, when I first met Mark and we started talking about Wisconsin River Sportsman's Club and what role we were going to play. Ray actually brought to one of our club meetings, sadly, goes last August, inquiring about trapping control, just to give everybody an update. We did have a club member that trapped that vicinity. It was clarified before that began that it's on Fred Wall's land and I got assurance from him to trap exclusive rights for the Wisconsin River Sportsman's Club, the whole river roadway to behind rivers. So, in that immediate area around there. So we have people watching that for, uh, if we have any problems with any muskrat or anything that, to Mark's point, anything that starts causing problems with the liner, we'll be taking care of that. Uh, goose control issue, there hasn't been any yet, there's been a few out there, but Mark and I are talking, if it becomes a problem, we'll have club members willing to help out with that too. And the fish stocking, which is near and dear to my heart, which is why I'm here tonight. So Mark and I have been talking again. Uh, I actually called the board meeting with board and directors and, uh, well, it's been done, the Lake Marion Fish Stocking Fundraising Committee, of which I'm the chair. We had a meeting a week ago last Monday and discussed what our commitment was going to be to the Lake Marion Project. We have vested interest in there, obviously, the shelter, I put a roof on that a few years ago, and the pier, Village bought the materials again. We had labor up there to rebuild that pier, so, uh, and I'll mention it on my committee, I have two life members, Bob Palin and Mark Shaneman here, and other members, twenty-five year plus members of the club that are on my committee for specifically raising funds. So we are going to be having a meeting, uh, our next meeting is on July eleventh. We're not meeting on the fourth, that Thursday, that's meeting the first Monday of every month. In that meeting, we will have a motion presented to the entire membership of, uh, an earmark fund. Right now, it's twenty-five hundred dollars. Uh, if that passes, we'll secure that for initial funding for what's planned to be fall, fall twenty twenty, or fall twenty nineteen and fall twenty twenty. Mark can speak about that in more details as he's been coordinating that with the, with the hatchery question. So we know that there's been a lot of work done by a lot of specialists here. I'm not a PhD, just a biologist, and I don't pretend to be. I've invited Mark to, uh, speak at our next meeting on the eleventh so we can have all this information go back and forth between all of our members in the committee and Mark, you know, information back to him, any concerns or, you know, same goal in mind here. We want to get fish in that lake, um, for everybody. So, um, and I think we'll have ongoing commitment, if needed, um, by the club for fundraising. I mean, I see no reason to stop our fundraising efforts. This is going to be an ongoing thing, not, not one year done or even two years done. I feel we, we're all anxious to see what that result's going to be five years from now. Any questions for me?
Bradley, I want to say we appreciate the partnership we have with the Sportsman's Club. The fact that you folks are monitoring the muskrat issue, the, um, the issue with peace, that's something that's critical to, to, uh, the maintenance of that lake. We appreciate you folks stepping up to the plate on that.
Well, we want to make it a place usable for the whole community again. That's, you know, we've got members and I have two grandsons that I plan to deal with their fishing with, so I've invested in it. And I'll say before I forget more from Mark, um, I'll have members to help with the aquatic planting, as long as we don't get in the way. Again, they're the experts, not us, but I'll have labor there if need be.
Thank you.
Just to kind of piggyback on you, Gary, you know, they do have such a vested interest in this and contributing time and time again. I mean, their voices should be heard loud and if, if the boats are going to affect the fisheries, if they're going to affect the liner, if they're just, you know, I mean, they're the ones that I'm turning to for, for answers of what you want to see out there too, I mean.
I have, I have two questions. Uh, Mark, we had to put that boat launch in as part of this. I mean, somebody, somebody said it was required, is that correct?
Boat launch was put in with the intent that at some point, if we have a weed problem, that we need to use, uh, some county equipment to manage the weeds that we have designated site to.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we aren't going to, we aren't going to entertain a discussion on this, but Mark, you raised some valid points and I share that concern.
Thank you.
There is no swimming, there are no air mattresses, there are no any other, because the, the company that provided the sealant, the ESS thirteen, said, yeah, you're not going to, you're not going to hurt it unless there's a lot of activity that's affecting that lake bed. Now, we will be watching that. It may be necessary for us to, um, rope off the launch area specifically and try and stop people from, uh, standing on the lake bed, but it may be necessary for us just to curtail that activity in total. So I share your concerns and you're not, you're not speaking to deaf ears, okay?
I think it's worth putting on the next agenda to discuss again, you know? Before it becomes a problem, because it is, it's like, oh, yeah, we can take our kayaks out and all of a sudden, boom, there's twenty of them out there. It's not like one or two going through there right now. It's definitely.
And the thing that I guess really got me was there wasn't one soul out there that was from Mason. They never paid one penny for that lake.
Your comments have fallen on deaf ears, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Jeff Werth is here to talk about Banson.
Yeah, thanks for having me. We met with Tim Wick and Bill Montalbano and the group from Taliesin, the organizing committee, last, this past week to firm up plans. We were able to raise the money. I have in hand and/or pending, in hand, uh, enough to, to begin the construction. I think Bill has been in touch with Mark to get the exact site placement because I understand there's some easement things that may impact that. But what I'd like to do then is put on the agenda for next meeting and, uh, a formal, Tim will have construction needs set up for us and he tells me that it'll take about a week to put the whole thing together, so. I'm happy to report that. Coincidentally, Jason Griffiths from Taliesin sent me an article out of an architectural magazine, Stitzberger, I believe it's in Germany. Somebody stole our design. And there's a great article printed for you because it's, it's incredible. So, uh, like I say, I'd like to have it on the next, next agenda in two weeks then to, to present the exact site, the construction plans, and thank you for your support.
Well, thanks for doing this, Jeff. This is going to be a nice centerpiece.
Oh, I think it's a sight problem. This magazine gave me some additional ideas for, for its use, so. I do have, if anybody wants, in fact, actually what I can do is, I've got these on digital. I could send them to each of the board members, uh, through the village website then.
So just, just give them to Peter and he'll have them on.
Okay.
He'll have them on the screen for the next time. Just make sure that, uh, every part of the process goes through Mark because he had a public works. He's in charge of all physical property.
If they abandon those tracks.
You'll ultimately.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you very much for your support on this as well.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right. Item seven, Billy's president report. Just to, uh, to give you all a heads up. The flood created issues for the village. We had a board of review, uh, initial board review soon in May.
Yes.
We adjourned that meeting because in looking at the adjustments that were made to flood properties, we realized that not all the severe damage properties were included in that. So we, uh, held a second, uh, we adjourned our meeting until June thirteenth and addressed, I believe, twenty-two flood damaged properties at that time. So, long and short of it, this folks, we, uh, we had an increase before all this started in our equalized valuation of a million one sixty-five. After we adjusted everything, all the flood damages were essentially flat. It was our, um, twenty eighteen assessed valuation. So all of the net new construction we got because of the new homes constructed in twenty eighteen in the village, the valley was taken away by the flood damage. So we're even. So the bad news is we lost a lot of, uh, that increase in assessed valuation. The good news is we have the wherewithal to support that. So to the, I can tell you that, um, it's, it's likely to be a tough budget process. We will take care of our employees. We will honor our debt obligations and everything after that is subject to cutting. Okay. Administrator report. Do you have that in front of you? I'm just going to rattle that off so Peter's reading this whole thing. We spent thirty hours on utilities, thirteen hours on resolved ordinance violations, nine hours on financial statements, nine hours, uh, on our rate case, on our electric rate case, two hours on annual safety meeting, three hours on new lease contract for next year. The village's new use of social media, they spent three hours on and two hours on, uh, the FEMA project. Did you go home tonight?
Yeah. Several nights.
Good to know. Okay. Deputy in charge report, we were regaled at the last meeting. So, public works report, Mark has his report in writing. Mark, uh, I think he's accomplished a lot in the last month.
We come to work every day with a full page to-do list and we don't finish it. We are everywhere.
Yeah. You want to get some of the new highlights?
Sure. I'll just rattle through it here. We worked with Wick Buildings on the coordination of, and repair of one of their private fire hydrants. Worked with Vanguard Electric on, uh, tree removal projects. We removed and trimmed a bunch of trees at Lion's Park, ran the street sweeper for three days. Provide supplies and support to the pool staff. Operated a mosquito fogger, continue, resume our water meter replacement project. Prepared three-inch service to this building. Ran the sewer jetter a couple of days. I have worked on obtaining quotes for grinding trees in brush for new brush dump operation. We installed a water lateral at one twenty acres. Spent quite a bit of time working with Dave Marshall, Mike Robinson, Dan Oldie and Bradley on the fish stocking options. And, uh, worked with Kason and Associates, coordinated the aquatic planting at Lake Marion. Coordinated and scheduled the stream shoreline repair at two eighteen Bridge Street. Coordinated the installation of the new signs at Lake Marion. Spent quite a bit of time with MGE in the last month as they replaced gas mains and laterals in the Scott Street neighborhood. Spent quite a bit of time, uh, working with Rural Construction and our engineers on our water project. Probably spent half of my time with that and then trying to fit everything else in between. That's about it.
That's enough. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Item eleven, Vanguard Commission update.
Our meeting is, uh, this Thursday.
Item twelve, update on Dean and I will waste water.
Uh, big thing is the budget's been finalized and looks like we should have a substantial drop in what we're going to be charged.
Again?
Well, we're firming it up, but it's going to be from a little over a hundred thousand, probably about a hundred and ten thousand.
That's good news. Item thirteen, uh, there was no EMS meeting. Item fourteen, Mike or Mark, you want to finish on Lake Marion update?
Sure. So, as I mentioned, the signs that were ordered by the village were delivered, I believe, on Friday. They are, they were put up today. Kason and Associates was at the lake today and started the aquatic planting and they anticipate being here for two and a half days. The other thing I have to report is I've spent quite a bit of time trying to backtrack into the previous efforts that were navigated in twenty fifteen in regard to fish stocking. So, working backwards, I, the, the DNR Fisheries Manager that the village worked with, that Chris Long worked with in twenty fifteen, has since retired and has been replaced. So I also worked with Dave Marshall, who is an affiliate of Rob Montgomery. So we dug out the twenty fifteen stocking permit, circled back with the new fisheries manager at the DNR, this Dave Marshall, and the hatchery that was identified in twenty fifteen as being a contractor. And so we took the stocking permit and asked if these species and quantities are still something that we should use as a target and what kind of timeline that we should try and work towards because it is almost July and stocking is usually spring or fall. So I tried to, I, the hatchery came back with three options. One was to my request, which was a fast track to try and get some fish in the lake now and another stocking in the fall. And based on the, the way the timing worked out, we were not able to achieve the timeline that we needed to stock fish before the end of July, which seemed like it would be foolish to do at that time. So option one, that the hatchery presented was basically put out the window, not achievable. Option two that they presented would be a fall stocking this October, once and done. And option three was a smaller quantity this October, followed with another repeat next October of twenty twenty. And circling back through the fishery manager at the DNR and this Dave Marshall from Montgomery and Bradley, we've all weighed this out and, uh, it seems the most cost effective and most value, I guess, to do it over two years. And because you need to stock less forage for the, the forage minerals cost more than the fish ultimately. So if you do it in two smaller increments, the cost drops and you have a higher, should have a higher success rate. So, uh, that, based on the group that's worked on this, I, I, I'm not a biologist. I'm just a guy that has been trying to put this together, but I would recommend that the village proceeds with option three. That allows the hatchery manager and myself to get a permit in place. And with the permit in place, we open up opportunities for free fish from, uh, the DNR and from the federal government. And it also gives us something to work towards for this year. If the village chooses to expand it and do it all at once, so be it. But this gets things in motion at the lowest cost.
Okay.
Sounds good. Yeah, you guys have done your research.
I'd like to maybe try and future discussion, maybe there's nothing we can do to curtail, but try and curtail people from transferring fish from other bodies of water into Lake Marion. Maybe we can't do anything, but maybe we could create a ordinance? I don't know. Maybe the DNR would have something to say about that, but start getting the wrong species in there.
Silage out at the lake when I.
That's going to curtail it, but you know it's still going to happen, but.
Yes.
I can't open to the audience, okay? This is.
So if we could just have a future discussion. So, if we could just have a future discussion. I, I don't want any more signage out there than anybody else, but that might be, have to be something we have to add out there, just to curtail it. Otherwise, you're gonna have everybody dumping everything in there from everywhere. That's what happened the last time, twenty seven, thirty years ago, so.
Is there any, let me ask the three sportsmen, is there any opposition to the recommendation of the two stockings?
No.
And that makes sense.
We discussed that at our board meeting and it seems like that's the preferred and probably the smartest way to do it.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion from the board that affects?
Make the motion.
Second. Second by Scott, discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Gary?
Same sign.
One thing to Scott's, it is illegal to transfer a fish from one body of water to the other in the state of Wisconsin now with the VHS disease and the thing, so I don't think you'd have a problem by signage or end monitoring it.
Okay. Mark, anything else? All for now. All right. Thank you. Item fifteen, update on Mazel Twenty Twenty Committee?
Just a real quick one, we'll be setting a meeting in the next few weeks. The gayway to the driftless is working on a gem grant for destination marketing with the State Division of Tourism. And they're gonna be asking for support for the three, from the three communities, possibly money from the three communities, but they're gonna come to talk to the Mazel Twenty Twenty Committee first, bother.
Gary? Item fourteen on the lake, Bradley has been working closely with me in representing the sportsman's club. So, I guess before I close out on that item, I would ask if he has anything more to?
Um, thank you. There was one, one thing, we discussed it in our meeting, which hadn't been discussed here yet. Everyone's looking at, throwing a bunch of money into a bucket for fish stocking. We would like to give them the highest percentage chance of survival and to maintain themselves within the habitat that's there. That brings the question of a no fishing for X amount of time. I would like consideration of that. That's gonna be a village issue. I don't know that the club can make any rules about that or if there's special considerations, that'd have to go to the state, the DNR, but I think it's something that's gonna have to be monitored by the community and itself policed. There will be people that go out there and keep everything they catch. You can't police that a hundred percent of the time.
I've seen people fishing out there already.
Yeah? I seen people fishing there. I heard the fellow members. So, I just ask that if it's a village decision in their context to establish a rule that's gonna help us succeed in this overall.
Yeah, that's not an issue. We wanna see that adopted. Anything else? Okay. Thank you, fellas. Let's, let's, we have a national Lake Marion discussion. All right. Item sixteen, violations of property ordinance.
Um, we've got the printout from you, a couple of changes to it though. Three seventeen State Streets are ready to comply. So, there's no issue there. And I'm adding one to the list of ones that'll get letters tomorrow next Dollar General. It's gotten out of hand there and we haven't gotten to it.
Questions from the last meeting, the property on Curtis Street? Did that backyard get moved?
Uh, yes, it did.
It did?
Yeah.
The woodpile taken care of?
Uh, the woodpile wasn't an issue. Cause it was neat and it was in the back. If it was in the front, it would've been an issue, but it did get moved.
All right. And then vehicle violations, particularly in the rest of the crossroads.
I went over with Kyle. All the vehicles there were, that were there were licensed and appeared operable. We talked with, with George from the business there and actually he was in the process of moving stuff inside for the day. And so, and he, and Kyle kinda gave him a warning saying, you gotta keep track of the seven vehicles. And he said he wants to work with us. So, but all the other vehicles that weren't his were all licensed and operable, so there's nothing you can do about it if it's on private property.
Property at the end of Crescent Street?
Yeah, the Crescent Street Tracy has been talking to our lawyer about because they have not gotten back to him like they said they would.
Right. And Scott brought up last time that there might be somebody living in the story to us, like they saw that in the last week.
And actually Kyle, I told Kyle that night, he started checking into it and Nate and he have been talking with the owner and some people there too, so.
Do we know who, who it would be, just to confirm that I have the correct individual or no? We can always speak about that later, but I just wanna make sure that, know whoever this person is.
Oh, I don't know who the person is, because I know, but I know the owners talked to him.
Okay.
Very good. Any questions of Peter on property ordinance violations? Let's move on to item seventeen, flood update, anything? Hearing nothing, we have no old business, we'll move on to new business. Item one, temporary class B license for Dandy Dancer Festival on eight seventeen nineteen. Motion by Natalie. Second by Jerry, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most opposed by the same sign. The motion is carried. Item two, I'm going to take this in two motions, folks. I'm going to ask for a second motion on the Rena M. Verris operator license. So, this motion, I would ask for a motion to issue operator's licenses for Rebecca L. Arnold, Brenda Marie Walter, Jessica Marie Bartle, Ruth A. Hardy, Jill A. Lucy, Kyle C. Brunner, Dennis A. Meyer, Jensen Daniel Doyle, and Kale Joseph Estino. Their motion. Motion. Motion by Scott.
Second.
Second by Jerry, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most opposed by the same sign, that motion is carried. In meeting with Sue, Rena M. Verris does not qualify for issuance of an operator license based on statutes. Sue's recommendation, my recommendation is to deny the operator license to Rena M. Verris.
Is there a specific order, like there's an order, I mean, I see there's a ton of, but is there like an ordinance they have, like?
Well, it's state statute with substantially, with something that substantially relates to the business and more, I mean, several. And it's the background check, so. And I also talked to Nate and Nate also represents me.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jerry to deny the operator license to Rena M. Verris that was seconded by Natalie, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most opposed by the same sign. That motion is carried. Item three, Creek, Creek, Creek Cleaning, an update of restoration of Stream Bank at Murphy Residence, Mark.
These are actually two separate items, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Creek cleaning, we budget, we have budgeted two thousand dollars to use towards creek cleaning and that has been adequate prior to twenty eighteen. With the massive amount of stream bank erosion, there's trees tipping over every day. We, we have far exceeded that. We've probably closer to eight thousand dollars, I would say, that we've spent. And I guess I just wanted to clarify with the board, my, I guess, direction that I take with that, with that process of creek cleanup is with regard to flood mitigation. And I understand that the cost will be higher until these banks get stabilized. It is part of what we're dealing with. But I guess with the increased number of trees that we're dealing with, there has been quite a bit of pushback from the community about the creek corridor not being cleaned enough. I guess, I, I would look for direction if you want the creek to be water park clean or if you want me to continue to do it as a flood preventative measure.
Well, I think our primary, I'm just speaking myself, our primary concern here, Mark, is mitigating flood damage.
And that's my goal. That's been the previous direction.
Yeah. And that's why we have a contingency fund. You know, I hate to, hate to dip into that, but there are also budget items that we're not going to exceed and at the end of the year, we do a reconciliation and move that around, so let's hear from board members, but now, when you talk park clean, what do you mean? I mean, as soon as something goes down, you're gonna get out there?
The kayak community has been bashing the Public Works Department for not being responsive enough. You heard my report, we have a lot going on. I can have it cleaned this week and next week there will be four trees in it and I might not get there for another week.
Yeah.
If you want me to prioritize that, I will, but otherwise I'm going to continue as I have.
My personal feelings are that, you know, working into your schedule as best as you can, but if you see some heavy deluge is coming, I prioritize it at that point. Is that fair?
Yeah. Some of the stuff we remove ourselves, some we use a contractor. I don't control the contractor. I can ask them to come and if it takes two weeks, it takes two weeks. But, so that's, I just wanted to have that conversation and-
I have a question. So, if I'm a property owner on the creek and I have a tree, so do I own up to the creek and if a tree goes down, that's really my responsibility?
It sure is, yes.
So, we have people.
If you leave it to the people to take care of it, it's not going to get done or you'll have flooding issues.
But could people be encouraged to take care of their own trees along the creek? I don't know, I'm, I'm just throwing that out there.
It could be encouraged, but-
We don't want everybody walking around with chainsaw.
Years for it to happen, you have to stay on top of it.
Right. What's the feeling of the, of the board? Is the discussion thus far sufficient to give? Mark, clear direction?
I think you do what you do. You know what you need to do is, I know exactly what you're talking about, though there is a huge thing, it's unsafe and that's kinda the double edged sword, cause we live outside, we're encouraging these people to come here and you're gonna drown in the creek, you know, or whatever it is, but.
And the fire chief. So, to think I don't care about that is just absurd.
Right. And the thing is, is like when those hazardous ones happen, that's when it does become your priority, so I think that you keep working how you're working and then fit it in, you know, as needed. I mean, if there's something that's detrimental, you're going to notice that happens that you can.
The other item out here with regard to two eighteen Bridge Street, the Murphy Property Network will start tomorrow and will hopefully be completed in, say, two weeks.
Will there be enough work done this week to stabilize?
Yes.
Okay. Questions with Mark? Let's move on to item four, update on comprehensive plan. So, every ten years, the village is required to do a comprehensive plan. Peter, you wanna explain why we need this?
To do the plan, it's a twenty year plan, but it's, Gary said, has to be updated every ten years. If we have this plan in place, we are by state law allowed to make land use decisions, zoning changes, anything with land use. If we don't have a plan in place, we can't make those decisions anymore. It's a big cross there. It's a good planning document to use. Also, a lot of grants through the state require having a comprehensive plan in place to get those grants. So, we need to do this. It's an expensive proposition, as you can tell by how thick it is and we have to hire someone to do it. So, we would probably have to put that out to bid.
The, you know, Van DeWolfe Associates is our consultant with respect to planning and I don't wanna mention the, the number, but the number was sufficient. I, I would really encourage them to put this out on bids and get the best price you can. My recommendation would be Van DeWolfe, we go back to Dear Beaker, we prepare the last comprehensive plan. And we ask Chris Long to submit a report as well.
Do you have a motion?
I do.
I'll make my motion.
Second by Jerry, second by Scott. Put this out on bid to the three main-
So, it's expired hasn't it?
Yeah.
And you think Chris Long has enough cloud and experience to do as good a job as the other two?
It's an update too, so it's, it's, the basic document is there.
And they don't wanna say that we go up to a big work of large regulation pricing.
You guys have had to bust in interest to?
Yeah, just kinda read between. Okay.
Do you have a motion?
Do you have a motion, a second?
We have a motion and a second to then put this out for bid to the three main utilities. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most opposed by the same sign, that motion is carried. Brushed up. I had to mention at the last meeting that I would contact the doors and I, I have got in touch with, with Brent, who are, what Mark proposed, what we have here, Emily Road, police repair, B and B Lameness, this is the road that goes in behind B and B. B and B owns this property here, so it's kinda L shaped, all right? Mark proposed purchasing from them roughly this. So, it'd be fifty feet from the back of the building. Brent came back just today and said, and he, he appears to be of the opinion that there's two separate lots. He said, we would consider selling lot one. And the parcel Mark was talking about would be right at about an acre. So, Mark, this would not be enough for our needs. We really need that.
The one acre is probably not enough. However, with that layout, we, we are the landowner to the west, so we would have almost two acres to work with.
We've got residential area over here, but Mark's thinking was that we would put a row of our- We've got residential area over here, but Mark's thinking was that we would put a row of Arvita across here. This would, this would be an automated gate that you would punch a code in that would be issued by the village office and that would be good for one day or two days or the weekend and then they would delete that code. So we can go back to him, but I don't know that we're gonna get the job done. What's your second choice, folks? Because we're running out of time here, we're getting to the point that if we can't put something together, we don't have a brush dump.
I don't see that as an option.
I don't either, but...
What was option two, the location?
We had three or four different sites in the rain, but this one here was the best. The other ones were out on, you might have to excuse me, because I've lived here most of my life, but I don't know all the streets downward. Mr. Paling lived down there, they had sold off some property to...
Bridge Street.
Bridge Street, okay. There was a section in there that is all woods and junk and everything. And then there was the farm to the left.
Willhams?
Who owns that farm either, but it's not being operable.
Yeah, Willhams.
Willhams?
Willhams.
Willhams Farm. We had one other one too.
Rips.
Rips, that's right. But we never, we never dug into anything. That's the only one we dug into.
Is, was his reasoning, Gary, just that, they don't really use that, do they? That building, maybe, because hopefully just have one thing.
Well, they really don't use that land back there. You know, to speed this thing along, folks, could, and this is hard to pin them down, because they're busy with their business and this is not something that's a top priority for them. Rather than keep coming back to the board, can you give Mark, Ray and me the authority to meet with them? And my suggestion would be, if we can pin down an agreed upon parcel, give us the authority to retain Tony Walker, to do a survey if necessary, create a legal description and to order appraisal on the property. And then, once we sit down with them and get an idea of pricing, we can come back to the board, go into closed session for negotiation purposes.
Sounds like a plan, are we better off asking people to contact us if they have property instead of us going to each, no, we don't do that?
Is it enough if we did have the L then? And did it the way he proposed? He isn't proposing an L.
That's worth looking at.
That's ours and that's, oh, that's gonna be close to an acre, it's just...
Too many years, you get a plant.
So you're saying moving out here? Well, it's originally set anywhere, right? It's just that the two are gonna be long and back to back, now it would just be an L. And that's only if the doers won't relinquish the way we want it. Okay, so if we could come across here, up or back and maintain the tree line here for...
You won't, you'll lose the tree line.
Retain time?
Yeah, we can use that, I've walked it, I think, you know, based on the volumes that we're looking at, putting that wherever we move to. An acre, I don't know that we can squeeze it in there without getting some of that and keeping the trees.
We may have to go to shipping two times a year, we're not talking about burning anymore, we're talking about shipping.
I would talk to the doers again already.
I think it's worth taking a...
I mean, ideally, you'd want that whole chunk line, so talk to them again and see.
Well, is there a motion to, to that effect, to give us authority to meet with them, to attempt to negotiate a deep parcel, to retain Walker for surveying, to retain an appraiser and then come back to the board? Sue, by Scott.
Second.
Yeah, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And most opposed by the same sign, that motion is carried. All right, we're into committee work, personnel, I have nothing, public works and property, Ray is shaking his head, parks and rec?
Meet July 6th.
July 2nd meeting. Public protection and ordinance, Jeff's got some work to do on tall grass and flood areas, so he'll be called at the meeting. And finance, I don't think Troy had anything other than paying up the bills.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
By Natalie.
Second.
Second by Scott, discussion. All those in favor of paying the bills, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And most opposed by the same sign, that motion is carried. Does anyone have announcements?
Mark? Long range plan with regards to the fire department that was initiated probably about seven years ago, ended with the replacement of a bumper in 2016, I think, and it actually got pushed back to get coordinated with this bond issue. But, so with that, the fire department had created a truck committee that started a spec for a new rescue pumper two years ago. We went to contract with a vendor about thirteen months ago and we took delivery this past Saturday. And so the firefighters within the village have written a check for $15,000 from their fundraising money to contribute. So I've got that to give to you.
We'll take it equally.
I think that's a little...
And anybody that wants to raise, come and see me, one meeting's over.
And I, along that line, the optimists recognize Mark and Annette Geisler as citizen of the year for their work during the flood rescue.
Congratulate them. So if we all, if the, if the board meets out here, they'll take us around town, Louis and Sarah?
We'll go to Ray's.
I'm probably gonna be on display for National Night Out, that's perfect.
Fourth of July.
Fifty-eight minute meeting, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Scott, second by Ray, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed by the same sign, that motion is carried. Thank you, folks.